Councilmember Scott Erwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember David Montgomery Jr. Would you please stand?
Please bow your heads. If you have any further, we just thank you for this beautiful fall day that you have given us, Lord. We thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed on our community and for each person that is here at this meeting today. We thank you, Lord, for the progress that has been made against the pandemic, Lord, and we pray for continued progress against COVID around the world. Lord, we pray for wisdom today for our nation, our state, and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Please face our flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Erwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
All present. Counsel in Louisiana, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council-appointed Sergeant-at-Arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting. Counsel, we had a couple of requests for today on the agenda. The first one was to the mayor requested to remove item number six under new business. Do I need a motion to do that?
A motion, amend.
Motion to remove that item?
Yes.
Did you get a second, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith seconded.
Hi. Do we have any comments from the audience on this? Any comments from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote, please.
Motion carries. The next item I have is would add an addition to the agenda. It would be under new business and introduce an ordinance adding civic center supervision to the duty of the executive assistant Carol King Anderson and increasing the salary by $18,000 for the increased job responsibilities, and that was asked to be added by the mayor.
Okay. Motion amend. I'll second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, do you have any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries, and that's all the changes that I have to today's agenda, counsel.
I thought we had a new business.
That's if y'all, if after the discussion y'all decide y'all want to make a change to that ordinance, that's.
Okay, when we're actually introduce it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I just need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counsel, do you have any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Do we have any ceremonial matters?
No, sir. There are no ceremonial matters today.
We've got some bids.
Yes, sir. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 21-1517, 109 Colquitt Street, demolition.
Good afternoon, counsel. The administrative court voted to demolish this structure back in September 14th meeting. There is three addendums. The first one was to revise the asbestos report and list the attendees at the mandatory meeting. The second one was to extend the bid opening by two weeks to today's date, and the third one was the final addendum to answer questions in our revised bid form. Our first bid is from Three Gen Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. Their bid bonus included. It is for $24,662. That's 24662.00. Our last bid is from Redtail Contracting LLC. They acknowledged the addendums. Their bid bonus included. It's for $26,950. That's 26950.00. I asked that the city council approve the reading of the bid.
Some move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you, ladies.
Counsel, we need to go back up. We missed an item. The amendments, approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes. Second. Second.
Questions? Counsel, do you have any questions about the minutes? Audience, do you have any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, unfinished business.
Public hearing consideration for final adoption of 2022 operating and capital budgets for the city of Bossier City as presented and previously amended.
Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
No, there's no, there's no vote. It's a public hearing, so.
Well, I'm sorry. If this is a public hearing, if there's no comment from the audience, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Yes, sir. Just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah. David Crockett, live in 653 Domain, Bossier City. General comment about the budget in general with this item as well. I'm a big advocate for conservative spending, and I'm really, with some of the recent issues with the budget, the new debt that we're taking on without knowing what the spending was, Mayor really had hoped that we had possibly vetoed some of that debt so we could have a public discussion on those things. I'm really looking for fiscal conservatism. I sent a article to all the members of the council, and it may not sound like it applies, I sent it about three weeks ago on budget balancing, but what it is, is an article that was written by the University of North Carolina after the fiscal problems that the country had in 2008, 2009, and we are facing a period of financial uncertainty. We don't know where inflation's going to take us. We don't know how that's going to affect our city budget, and I'm just looking for more actions from the council that will be addressing these issues. I had hoped the public discussion that was coming out of some of the articles would have resulted in some vetoes that would have caused some of these issues to surface. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to comment before we close the public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Item number two?
Are we going to combine?
Yes, sir. If you make that motion, we can.
If you wish, you'd have to make a motion to do that, sir.
So it would be through?
It'd be items number two through 20, if you want to combine all the budgets.
All right. I'll make the motion that we combine items two through 20.
I'll second that.
And that's to combine all the budget items into one reading. We will still have to have another one to adopt, another motion.
Say that again, Phyllis.
You know, this is just to combine them into one reading, and so then there would still be another motion to adopt.
Adopt, yeah. All right. Does anyone have any questions about combining these budgets, items two through 20? Counsel? All right. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt the 2022 operating and capital budgets as previously presented and amended.
Some move. Second.
Is there any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to reappropriate $500,000 from the sales tax capital improvement funds for unplanned streets and drainage improvements. Final reading?
Some move. Second.
Let me see that. Hi, Wade. Can I ask you a question before we close on this? I know you, we talked about, we looked at the cave-in on Schuler last week.
LA Cove, yes, sir.
Why hadn't that started yet? I mean, I thought we were.
We're waiting on materials.
Oh, really?
The pipe cannot be delivered until Thursday. None of the pipe suppliers in town had that in, on their yard, so it was Thursday before it could be, and that's when we're tearing the intersection. We're going to tear half the intersection out, get that replaced, rock that all the way to the surface, and then tear the other half out, rock it, and then we'll cut that, we'll cut that rock that we leveled up to the driving surface and put that in the other side when we, and then pour concrete.
Okay. Yeah, I wrote down today and saw it, you know, after we talked.
I have, I have that ordinance on, and when that comes up, I'll have some, I've got some pictures for all the council members to see what you saw the other day.
Yeah, I guess. I'll send them some too, because I took it last week when we were down there. Thank you. Any questions from the audience on this issue? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Heard, McElroy, and Vestral LLC to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the city of Bossier City, Brookshire Grocery Arena Fund, Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund, and Policeman's Pension and Relief Fund. Final reading?
Some move. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve change order number six for the Tinsley Park expansion project with an increase of $25,540.67 for a total contract price of $12,827,298.53 with an additional 75 days added to the contract. Final reading?
Some move. Second.
Now, we talked about this last week. Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover design and construction costs for drainage improvements along Full of Love Drive for a total of $125,000 to come from Fund 400 Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund. Final reading?
Some move. Second.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Justin Marbut, Mechanical Cooling Services property. Location zero Whitehurst Street or lots 11, 12, and 13 of Whitehurst subdivision. Request zoning amendment from RA Residential Agriculture to I-1 Light Industrial for an industrial mechanical cooling services office.
I'm Cole Marbut with Mechanical Cooling Services. Basically, we're a commercial industrial heating and air conditioning company and looking to build a shop on these three lots.
Okay. Could you state your address too, please, sir?
A business address?
Yes.
The current one is 1310 Driftwood Drive.
Thank you. Do you need a motion?
We didn't get a motion. Can we get a motion?
Is the name Justin?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Was that Justin Marbut?
Any questions for the gentleman? Thanks, sir. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Teresa B. Miller, Bonomo Investment Company LLC. Location 2495 Barber Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request zoning amendment from B-3 General Business to RLD Residential Low Density for future sale.
Some move.
Just state your name and address, please, ma'am.
Teresa Miller, 108 Chesterton Court, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Give me a second.
Oh, you want the, the address of where we're going to?
No, that's where we're, we're living at now.
Right now?
Yes, ma'am.
108 Chesterton Court, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Did it pop up, ma'am?
Yeah.
Mr. Erwin, did yours pop up?
It did. I voted. It's showing I voted on mine.
Are you a yay or a nay?
Yay.
Thank you.
I think you voted on the first one. It said second, didn't you?
Probably so. Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. Location 5401 Shed Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for a small cell tower.
Some move. Second. Yes, sir.
Robert Vane with AT&amp;T 3115 D Street, Shreveport, Louisiana.
Anything you'd like to tell us about this?
So this is a small cell wireless facility that will be installed to improve coverage in that area. It happens to be located on private property owned by the Department of Health and Hospitals, and that is the reason for this conditional use permit.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance amending the 2022 operating budgets to include a 2% raise for city employees not entitled to state mandated raises. First reading?
Do we introduce it and then amend it, or do I amend it first?
It's, it's up to y'all if y'all want to discuss it or why the amendment's going to be made.
I'd like to propose an amendment to this proposed ordinance and to exclude civil service employees under three years of service. It creates a nightmare that we've been through in the past as far as pay and differential pay and so forth according to civil service. The intent of the raise is to give those employees that are not entitled to annual civil service raises of 2%, a 2% raise for their efforts and recognition during this COVID pandemic and to reward them for, you know, their loyalty for staying on with the city and continuing to provide a service, in my opinion, unmatched anywhere to all of the taxpayers of Bossier City. So I would offer that amendment, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Chief, I think.
We need a second.
Mr. Darby, second.
I think Mr. Montgomery stated fine. I mean, is there anything you need to add? Thank you. Any questions from the audience?
David Crockett again from 653 Domain in Bossier City. My only question on this, I absolutely agree that maybe the city employees should get the, get the pay raise. My only question would be, I haven't heard any discussion or anything in the public about where the federal money that's gone to the state and the state is divvying out to the local communities. If this money, if you're actually rewarding people for what they did during COVID, if there's been any discussion about how that money could apply to this, and then also if you're rewarding people, I don't think 2% is a problem, but if you're doing it actually to reward people from COVID things, it can be things that can be done on a one-year basis or something like that. I don't think that there's, there's a problem with this amount. But I'd just throw it out. I haven't heard anything about how the federal money that's given to the state, that's given to Bossier City, that's going to get some of that money. Where's it going? I have no idea. If it could apply here, it would be nice to hear that.
It doesn't apply here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, just like to say that I want to think back, I think probably since 2018, we've not given a cola.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's been a long, long time. So I, I think we talked about that in the workshop, that it was really our desire to honor those persons who have made sacrifices just in the last few years, and I was glad that we were able to find the money to do that, and I think they deserve it, and I'm glad that this council has self-fit to make that a reality for those that serve these citizens in Bossier.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Mr. President, I'd like to just echo Mr. Darby's comments, and thank you, Mr. Darby and Mr. Montgomery, for working with Ms. Williamson and making, making this a reality. So, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Please cast your vote. Let me find my arrow here.
Motion carries. Counsel, I would, I'll need a motion to introduce as amended.
Make the motion we introduce as amended.
I'll second.
I guess we're going to open up to the public again if they want to speak on this issue, the one we just talked about. Counsel, do you have any more questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing the city of Bossier City to charge an additional fee for all payments made by electronic means. First reading?
Some move. Second.
Mr. Jacobs, would you like to speak on that, what we're doing there?
Well, the city, for the sake of convenience of its residents and citizens and customers, people who need permits, things of that nature, allow certain payments of bills, fees, and other things by electronic means. Typically, the service providers, the electronic devices, you know, the people, they, they charge a percentage of that, of the total bill or the total fee due. It, so for instance, if you have a hundred dollar water bill, you pay by credit card, that service that facilitates the credit card charges 4%. So you're collecting $96 on a hundred dollar water bill. And so there has been no ordinance put in place until now that would allow the city to recoup that cost. And if the customer wishes to pay by, like with a direct debit, you know, from a checking account, of course, there's no fee charged for that. They want to come up here and mail in a check, there's no fee charged for that. But for those customers who choose to pay for convenience sake by credit card, this will allow the city to recoup the cost that that facilitator charges the city. And so we discussed it with finance, and it appears that the city is losing somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 a year on these various fees, and this would allow the city to, and it's, it's not uncommon when you pay by credit card, when you go out to eat, they charge you a convenience fee. When you go to Dillard's, they charge you a convenience fee. It allows the merchant to recoup the full cost of the service.
Mr. Jacobs, will that fee depend on the amount of the utility bill, or is it just a flat fee?
Well, typically, the facilitating service charges a percentage of the, of the bill due. If they charge a flat fee, then it would allow the city to recoup the flat fee. If it charges a percentage, it would allow the city to recoup whatever percentage.
Counsel, any other questions?
And, and if they use their routing number and account number and do an electronic transfer, that's free.
If you have a direct debit, the bank generally does not charge a fee, the financial institution, so there is no fee. If you come up here and pay with a check or cash or money order, there is no fee. So it's totally up to the customer whether they want to pay a little bit extra for the convenience of going online and using a credit card.
And there are several, several departments we have that are taking credit cards, so it does add up. Mr. Montgomery?
For clarification, we're not going to make money. The, I spoke with Angela earlier, and whatever the fee is, it's charged, it's handled on that end, so the city will not make money.
That is correct.
The transaction. The only thing we will be reimbursed for is the actual cost to the city of the transaction fee, so.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, anyone have any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $14,550 to perform a drainage study for Max Bayou and related improvements within the Preserve Phase Two residential development to come from Riverboat Capital Projects Fund. First reading?
Some move. Second.
Any questions, audience?
Ben, is this the, in response to the citizens' requests that?
Yes, we were. Both citizens and administration, so this is, we're using an opportunity. We're requiring the developer of the Preserve Phase Two, we call it. They've done a number of units there. They've got two more units underway and a large piece of property down in South Bossier, and there's drainage concerns down there. We're requiring that developer to do an extensive drainage study, and they're, we're piggybacking onto that to do some more study of Max Bayou down there. on to that to do some more study of Max Bayou down there because it's the problem extends beyond the limits of their development. We think we need to understand that better to be able to guide future development down there as it specifically relates to Bossier's floodplain.
Well, I appreciate you and Wade's efforts on this because the hydrology does seem to have changed around there, and I appreciate this study to make sure that Riverbend and other neighborhoods are safe from flooding. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ben.
Mr.-
Any questions from the audience? Any other questions, counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare the completion of the water main abandonment project by ASB Utility Construction LLC at a total project cost of four hundred and ten thousand six hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents, including change order number one in the amount of thirty-three thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and fifty cents, and to amend ordinance three of two thousand and twenty, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement the Walter O'Bigby Carriageway Fund. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution permanently closing Union Pacific Railway located at Old Shed Road, Old Shed, City of Bossier City, and authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute any and all documents necessary to affect affect said closing. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience?
Mr. Harvey, state your name and address, please, sir.
Tommy Harvey, one oh eight Esplanade Court, Bossier City. Mayor Chandler, President Williams and City Council. I'm extremely surprised to even hear that we're considering closing a east-west thoroughfare, partial or any any thoroughfare. In July of two thousand and seven, the city of Bossier approved Resolution Number Twenty-Six that included the shed road right-of-way for a cost of one point six million dollars. Thirteen years later, with construction cost overruns, various change orders, supplement engineering designs, and additional three hundred and five thousand dollars, upgrading shed road from two lanes to four lanes was complete. The total amount spent for the shed road upgrade was over nine point eight million dollars. Thankfully, this was an eighty-twenty split with the state, so Bossier City's cost ended up being just around one point nine million dollars. It actually took four years to complete, and the businesses and homeowners who had to endure the construction issues were led to believe it would all be worth it. Now the city wants to discourage traffic from using shed road by closing their direct access to and from the new carriageway. Shed Road was supposed to be a relief road to move traffic safer between Airline Drive and Benton Road and discourage traffic from cutting through local neighborhoods. Closing the railroad crossing on Shed Road is going to force drivers that would have naturally exited the carriageway roundabout in front of McElroy Metals to seek a longer alternate route to get to Shed Road. They would either have to exit the carriageway at the Hamilton Road Roundabout and go south to the light at Hamilton Road and Texas Street, then turn left on Texas Street and go east to Benton Road and turn left, then finally go north on Benton Ri- Road and turn right onto Shed Road. Others may opt to stay on the carriageway until it intersects at Benton Road, then decide whether to backtrack south on Benton Road to Shed Road or to cut through the Green Acres neighborhood at Douglas Driver Melrose Avenue, depending on their destination. Last Monday was the first that I had heard that the railroad crossing at Shed Road would be closed. The engineering design always included the shed, that Shed Road would be connected to the carriageway. Now, however, because someone dropped the ball, Union Pacific wants to play, let's make a deal. With Bossier City and make, this is a quote from the ordinance, "The permanent structure of the at-grade crossing of the Union Pacific Railroad located at Old Shed, City of Bossier, as a condition of executing certain construction easements necessary for the completion of the Walter O'Bigby Carriageway project," end quote. If closing this crossing is justified because there have been numerous accidents at this crossing, then we should probably close half the crossings in Bossier. But that would be ridiculous, even though Union Pacific would love it. I'm asking you to please take time and look at this from all points of view. Closing a railroad crossing should be a well-thought-out and thoroughly-studied action. Please consider the businesses in that area, traffic safety, and long-term effects of closing this crossing. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Tommy. Anyone else in the audience like to comment?
My name is Paul Rosini with NTB and Associates. I reside at fourteen twenty-eight Linton Road in Benton, Louisiana. This is Mr. Dirk Crone with TRC.
Eight five five zero, United Plaza Boulevard, Suite five oh two, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, seven zero eight zero nine.
We represent the design team that's been working on the project, and in light of the statements by the gentleman, let's see, this is Don Clayton. Don, give your address, please.
Don Clayton, excuse me, forty-one seventeen Parliament Drive, Alexandria, Louisiana.
So what I'd like to say is, last Friday, I sent a letter into the city council and the mayor, kind of putting forth some ideas that I wish you would consider, and I'm going to put enter a part of that in the record. The origins of the Walter O'Bigby Project is currently designed as a result of a five-year process that took many things into consideration, including a permit process. The NTBA design team presented many options in those years to the then-city engineer Mark Hudson to arrive at a highly functional, aesthetically pleasing facility that until recently, and by all accounts, the city was extremely happy with and proud of. There have been literally been years of meetings with many stakeholders who are expecting the current design, least of which is a successful contractor who would build the project. The proposed closing of Shed Road is a drastic change to all that effort, and it's being done in what could be characterized as a knee-jerk reaction. The surrounding owners and businesses may not even be aware of this dramatic change on how it may affect them. Excuse me. The original design team has not been a party to any meetings discussing the closing of Shed Road. In the five-year design time since two thousand and fifteen signing the contract, we have never heard that Shed Road was on the table to be closed, and we've not received any requests ourselves from Union Pacific to do so. Prior to the special council meeting on Monday, October twenty-fifth, I reached out to Clayton Manning at Rail Pros to gain insight into what was transpiring. In that call, I heard that were still options on the table, two of which are to acquire the perp- the proper permit, or yes, to close the crossing. We think there needs another step taken and some time considered before you do this, and that's what we have to say. Any questions?
What would be involved in getting that permit? If if you guys have been involved all this time, and and, well, you have not been at the table, I guess, that's what you just said, but what what would that take?
You submit, the plans were actually submitted back in two thousand and nineteen to Rail Pros, the road crossing, for consideration of the permit, and that was in conjunction with the time we submitted the plans for the permit for the bridge. And so it was an ongoing process that Mark Hudson was spearheading. And then when he was replaced, it really just kind of went away. So Dirk, if you'd like to speak to picking it back up.
If you look at the Union Pacific criteria for gaining, quote, permit, there is a tremendous amount of information that's required for grade separations, whether it's above or below. But there there really is not much being said as what's required for grade separation. So for years and years, Mark Hudson, in coordination with Union Pacific, made every effort to keep Union Pacific abreast of what's going on, and in no time was there ever anything, and you've got backup documentation here, that says that ever talked about closing Shed Road. And and Don Clayton can speak for that, but I'd like to read one email, one of the latest emails, that through coordination with the team, this was the last real coordination with the current representative for the city. And Paul Rosini emailed us and said, "I told Justin these two crossings were under Mark's purview since expense and options on what type of crossing to pay for were not in ours." Were not in ours, he agreed. So during the process, Mark Hudson was was getting costs as to what it would, to actually have Union Pacific or KCS, the owner of the rail, actually build the crossing. So the responsibility of the city would be to bring the roadway up to the crossing and then pay the railroad to put the the crossing in, the actual crossing, because that was under their purview. And so Justin Haydel said, he said, "Since we left the proper gaps, the city would have to decide to move now or after the construction was complete, which could actually make a smooth crossing more likely." I agree totally with that. Justin would like some of the emails that show how we got to where we are. Then we will set up a short conference call to set the path forward. He pretty much took the stance that they don't have to do anything with the crossing per se right now, which is good for us. Don, if you have any emails for the crossing that has the thread, including Mark Hudson, I would think that's enough to get us to the conference call. Let's see what those are, and I'll get them to Justin. I'd like to say for the record, I've worked in transportation for thirty-six years. I've worked on projects as high, Central lottery tunnel project, three hundred and fifty million dollars, okay? I've, Mark Hudson was one of the greatest public servants that I've ever had the privilege to work with, and he, if he was here, we would not be standing here today. That's why, that's what I believe as a professional of thirty-six years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, I would like to make the motion that we continue this item in light of that information, and also, I'm I'm a little concerned about having business owners be not aware of what's coming. It's it's, I know residential person's going to be impacted too, but I'm really concerned about going forward at this point because of the impact that they have on business. And so I think we should just take the information that was given today on the advisement in addition to try to have a little bit more dialogue about-
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Mr. Darby, Mr. Smith, when do y'all want to continue this item for? How long?
At least thirty days, I would I would suggest.
Well, can we speak on this before?
Sure, go ahead.
As far as the businesses, Mr. Roshenbach, would you please come up and speak to that concern?
Sure. And we echo everyone's concern, this is not the time to be running into this type of roadblock. So with the direction of the council moving towards the meeting today, we committed to the council to go and visit with some of the larger stakeholders out there, one of those being McElroy Metal, one being Bossier Remodeling, one being the energy service providers, those are big businesses that that operate on that corridor. They were aware, albeit surprised of what was going on, many of those businesses have granted right-of-way to the city for the project. The mayor was there, we we listened to their questions, answered those to the best of our ability, and have indicated really for the design team to move forward, we need some decision by the council. We agree that closing an at-grade crossing is a big deal, and before we can really pick a direction to run, we want to make sure that we're moving in the in the right direction. I'm not, I'm not here to make any claims in opposition of what NTB and TRC has indicated, specifically, we've looked through the records, we we've observed, there was a lot of coordination between the design team, the city, Mark Hudson, and UP. I think at the end of the day, if you were at the meeting, it 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 was less about that, less about what had been decided in the past, and more about we have an opportunity to close an at at-grade crossing, and that's what UP wants. The permit is in hand, it's about the agreements with the contractor that's currently working there, that contractor needs an agreement to get on the right-of-way to do the work, which we can't get. Their claim is that the roundabout is not designed in accordance with MUTCD standards and and other problems that they've got with it, but at the end of the day, my impression was their intent is to see that crossing closed. So we can delay it for thirty days, and maybe there is a path forward to where we don't have to do that, but I still think strongly UP's desire is to see that at-grade crossing closed.
Would would the thirty days adversely affect the project?
It's hard for me to answer that, I think so.
You think so?
Yes, sir.
And you said that the permit is in hand.
We have permission from UP to build the overpass. I think the original intent was because we were not monkeying with the actual at-grade crossing other than improving the approaches, because if you've driven that route, you know how poor the condition of those are. The intent was to improve the approaches. So there was no permit. I've seen correspondence from UP that indicated, hey, we're happy you're doing this, we may even contribute in paying for that at-grade crossing, but none of that seems to be of any memory on on the folks with Rail Pros and UP that we've talked to. So that, I believe, was was the reason why there wasn't a whole lot of of energy expended in trying to put a permit together for the at-grade crossings because there was no real change to that crossing. Now, as part of the permit process, when you're working within a railroad right-of-way, you have to get a right-of-entry agreement, you have to have inspectors that that are on the project, that are provided by the railroad, there's got to be money that exchanges hands, there's a lot of energy that happens once you get a contractor involved. They were at the pre-construction meeting Rail Pros was in relation to all of this. We've been trying to coordinate it now for months. And so when we finally were able to get a meeting with UP last week, week before last, this was all a bit of a surprise to everybody. You know, I I'm not, I'm not suggesting how you guys make your decision, but I can't say with certainty that it's not going to delay the the project. I mean, if there's a better way to do this, you know, then 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 we would, we would encourage that. We do see some concerns with the roundabout, with the at-grade crossing, and how having a rail there, as there is now with the railroad, you're not going to be able to use that east-west corridor when a train's there, and a train happens to be there quite often, that's the whole point of the overpass. And when there's a rail there and we're allowing people to turn on the shed road at that at-grade crossing, there's a very high potential that that traffic can stack up onto the carriageway and create problems there as well and defeat the whole purpose of having the overpass. So that is one line of thinking.
Okay.
Ben?
Let me ask one other thing before we we get to that. So has ManShack pursued that contribution from UP since since they seem to be receptive to that? Has ManShack done that?
Pursued what?
The 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 contribution that they would like to make to the project.
No, no, we haven't.
So why not?
That's a, that's an old, that's just something we've, we've discovered as we've gone back through and looked at the files. You know, the 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 position of UP, and the mayor was there, the position of UP at that meeting was that they knew nothing of the roundabout, didn't know the roundabout was going. I say UP, this is their, their, I don't know what their, Rail Pros is the company they use to mitigate these issues. And so, there were three representatives from Rail Pros at that meeting that indicated we weren't aware of a roundabout, you know, this is all new to us, we want to see the at-grade crossing closed.
I see. So, you've gotten the feedback from large stakeholders?
Yes, sir.
And that's great, I'm glad to hear that. Shed Road is part of District Two, and as Mr. Harvey mentioned, we spent a lot on getting that done, it took a long time, it was like a dream come true when it happened. So, what have you to share with us about residential impact?
I have not communicated specifically with the residents out there.
Okay, all right. So, that's going to be something you do after the facts?
We can, you know, I mean, I'm not opposed to whatever direction you desire us to take. I think for the residents there on that corridor between Benton Road, west towards the river, if you will, that having the overpass there should improve their, there won't be near as much traffic going on that particular spur of Shed Road upon closing the at-grade crossing there. And I use it every day, too.
Sure. Yeah, that alone is why I recommend to the council to give us thirty days to get a little bit more clarity on the impact. It's just not, it wouldn't be something I would support today. I think, I think it would be advantageous for us to look at that.
Well, I'd like to point out, and it's been said, the whole point of the carriageway is to get people from Benton Road over to the other side of the railroad tracks. That's why this is being built. It's the completion of a roadway that was voted on by the people of Bossier City, which started in South Bossier with the Arthur Ray Teague Parkway. And we have continued that through the center of the city, and this is the last piece that connects North Bossier with South Bossier without ever being stopped by a railroad track. And, you know, I'm not sure how many residences are even left on the west side of Shed Road, other than up, starting at Yarborough Street, which they can take Hamilton Road, or they can get on the Parkway if they're going north and get off at Benton Road. We have to look to at, we've got a contract that was bid, we accepted J.B. James as the contractor, and he has a finite amount of time, is that correct?
Correct.
And this is a huge, complex project, and so, we delay thirty days, and then we decide, well, there needs to be more study, I mean, they are going to look to us for any type of damages that they incur for that delay. And at the end of the day, I ask, what are we doing? I mean, the whole intent of the carriageway, and I'm repeating again, is to get people on the other side of the railroad tracks, and that at-grade crossing does not do that. And we all know that train, I think Mr. Maggio said, I had somebody said they sat there an hour and three minutes. And I think Mr. Maggio had someone that said they sat there fifty-five minutes at that at-grade crossing. And as we all know, it stops Shed Road, Barksdale Boulevard, and East Texas. There's three major thoroughfares that that train, when it sits and stops, halts all traffic. Once again, the reason for the carriageway was to alleviate that problem so that people could get over the railroad tracks, east-west travel, without having to stop and have traffic backed up. So, you know, I think we're doing our due diligence to ensure that the businesses are being taken care of. We want to integrate any type of design changes to facilitate their trucks entering and exiting the carriageway there at the roundabout. We can certainly have a workshop where we introduce how traffic's going to flow, you know, have one of those displays where you show with the railroad crossing closed, this is how traffic is going to flow. You know what I'm talking about, Ben?
Somebody sent one, somebody sent one to me, or I think it was last week, you know?
It's just, I think, and I would defer to Mr. Jacobs, is our legal counsel, what potential liabilities we could incur by delaying this contract.
I'll just state this, trying to force a railroad who is pretty much the law unto itself is impossible to do. If the railroad has made up its mind that as a condition of the required permits to finish up Walter Row Bigby, that they want this at-grade crossing closed, there is no legal action that I'm aware of that would, that we could force UP to give us those required permits. I was not at the meeting, it was my understanding, the mayor was at the meeting, Ms. Nottingham was at the meeting, Mr. Roshenbach was at the meeting with Rail Pros, and it was stated that as a condition of getting these last permits to finish up Walter Row Bigby, that they wanted this at-grade crossing closed. And that leads us to where we are today.
Did they give a timeline?
A timeline for?
That they need to be closed.
At the completion of the project.
Okay, so that's up.
Two or three years from now, probably.
Yeah, that's in the future. You know, we delay all the time, we just did a seventy-five day delay on Tinsley Park. We make delays all the time on projects, contractors request delays, we do it all the time on the council. And I agree with Mr. Montgomery, we want to have free flowing traffic throughout Bossier City, that would be ideal. But also remember that Shed Road was considered a cut-through to relieve Airline Drive as well. So, we did our due diligence in trying to get that project done, too. So, now we are going to regress, in a sense, because we're not going to go all the way through Shed Road any longer, once that crossing is shut down. So, again, it's my recommendation to the council that we have a few more days of dialogue, maybe it won't take thirty days, you know, and I think that we should do that.
Ben, correct me if I'm wrong.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dave.
The contractor is not requesting this extension. In the past, like Tinsley, that was something that we worked out, rain delays, and the contractor requested this additional time. J.B. James is not requesting additional time. We will be imposing upon them a restriction or an extension, or, you know, basically, y'all can't do work here for thirty days because they don't know what's going on. It's not the same, and I still believe that we potentially have liability with the contractor if we institute some type of delay. I mean, I think a good point that was brought out was the fact that this isn't going to happen until the completion of the project. We have two to three years to inform and work with the public before this is done. I don't, I don't know, I don't believe, excuse me? If you'd like to speak, please come to the mic, and if you could wait, and this gentleman's been, hold it, sir.
Hold on, hold on. What do you want me to do?
I'm speaking right now, I heard you speaking out in the audience.
I apologize, okay, but you did ask me to come forward.
Pardon?
You asked me what you want me to say, so.
He was talking to me, I was standing for a little while.
Yeah, I was speaking to. But anyway, if I could just.
Hold on one second.
Sure, go ahead, sir.
Anyway, now I've lost my train of thought, but I think, yeah, the fact that we have two to three years to work with the public, work with the businesses, to ensure that there is a transition, that they understand how traffic's going to flow, we're going to take the time to redesign the roundabout to where it facilitates flow of traffic for all the semi-trucks that are going back to McElroy Metals and some of the other businesses and facilities back there. So, I think it's been stated, the fact that we know that Union Pacific is requiring this for us to continue with the project, is that correct? And I'm sorry, sir, you have the floor, if you could state your name and address.
Yes, sir, David Johnson, forty-six oh nine, General Ull. You've mentioned, you mentioned Arthur Ray Teague, and I just wanted to speak to that for Sobo. Although this is going to cause a few people an inconvenience, anything, any time change happens, it does. But to me, this has dragged on a long time, and I think this time of year, if we go another thirty-day delay, it's just insane, because we're moving into the time of year where these guys are going to be shut down with Mother Nature. I think we need to move forward with this and get it done as soon as possible. We've dragged it out long enough. Are there going to be inconveniences to all of us at certain times? Yes, but for the good of this city and Arthur Ray Teague, I think we need to move forward with this, gentlemen. I mean, it's thirty days, as a citizen and taxpayer, it sounds crazy to me. I appreciate you bringing that up, but I think we need to move forward, that's what I have.
Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the, now, that's the same track that crosses East Texas Street.
Yes.
And crosses Barksdale Boulevard.
Yes.
Goes across the Tressos River into the yard. Now, if you remember stories on the news, probably six months ago, they, those trains sit there three hours sometimes on the tracks. Now, it's not, this is not going to fix that, I mean, unless you live up in North Bossier, but, you know, it's horrible to sit there, and I know the man on the end down there, Mr. Chandler, for, over the last four or five years, would call me, you know, that's not going to fix that problem.
We talked to Chandler Construction as well.
Yeah, that's not going to fix the problem of East Texas, you know, and I get calls from everywhere, go get my ticket, we can't give them a ticket, we don't know who to get the ticket, then we tried that before, you know, but somehow we've got to work with the train to get, sometimes, like I said, when they cross East Texas, cross Barksdale, then you got one coming north-south on Barksdale Boulevard, he stopped because they're still stopped there. I mean, we have to do something with the trains, we know that. We've got to get our congressman involved, that's what, the state guys have no power, it's the union that the trebels have, is the biggest union there is. So, we need to get our congressman involved, I think, to stop all this crap. They're stopping in their tracks, I understand it, but still, we've got to move people around, you know? Now, the other thing is, I mean, I don't know, I don't know, Mr. Darby, I understand what you're saying, I agree, you know, can we go for two weeks, is that going to hurt you? What's that alternative plan?
Yeah, so, I just wanted to interject this. There's no path forward without a redesign of that intersection, okay? And I think the ability to have an at-grade crossing at Shed Road, this is my opinion, for what it's worth, I'm not Mark Hudson, but my opinion, the ability to cross there is remote, it's remote. But there's no path through this, whether we close the at-grade crossing or not, where that intersection does not need to be redesigned. We, the city engineering office, don't want to engage in that effort until we have a direction forward. So, I think it's important that we still have to work on that intersection, we still have to do some redesign of that intersection, and all that's going to take time. We are, as soon as we learned that there was an issue there from UP, which was on a Thursday, and it's a big issue, we came to the council on a Monday, said, hey, we've got a problem here, and our recommendation, that's purely our recommendation, is that for, to facilitate, this councilman Montgomery has indicated, that north-south corridor, unobstructed north-south corridor in Bossier City, that removal of that at-grade crossing was a good decision and one that we would recommend. It's not the only decision that you can make there. So, I'll just leave it at that, that we're looking for a direction to go with the design, but having concurrence from the council, in our opinion, is needed before we do that.
Mr. President, if I could make a comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Darby, go ahead.
This could be an opportunity that when life throws you a lemon, you make lemonade. I've been concerned about where the Parkway was going to merge with Benton Road, there'd be a stoplight there, and potential traffic backups, and I like to see traffic flowing, not stopped at a red light. There'll be a lot of traffic going north, a lot of traffic going south. If we take the roundabout out at the Shed Road crossing, look at the potential of putting in a efficient roundabout at Benton Road and the Parkway. And that way, the, as Mr. Harvey was saying, the traffic that may be coming down our improved Shed Road could zigzag north if they're heading west, and quickly loop around that loop and go down the Parkway, and it would be a win-win situation. Yes, it's a little delay, but they're not ever stopped by a train, and they're not stopped by a signal that could potentially be one or two signals before you got through. So, there's a lot of time for this, you've got to redesign Shed Road. I won't be here, you know, by the time this thing gets done, but I encourage you to look at the potential of shifting funds from that roundabout to one at Benton Road and where the Walter Row Bigby meets. That's just my comment.
I'm glad Mr. Irwin brought that up, because that was going to be my question, if Union Pacific's big issue is the roundabout right there, is there something else, a redesign of that section from Shed Road to where it's going to connect with Benton that we could do, that would satisfy them, that will allow that crossing to stay open?
I don't think so, but I can't answer that, you know? And I, like I said, I don't know there's going to be a tremendous amount of funds that would go from that roundabout, because there's still going to be improvements needed at that intersection to facilitate truck traffic. We're talking right-turn lanes, things, left-turn lanes, things like that, that would have to be put in there to not interrupt that north-south route.
I think one of the concerns that I would have is for folks that are driving down Shed Road, if they want to hop on the carriageway, if we close that, if we close that crossing, they're going to have to either turn and go up Benton, get on the carriageway and then backtrack, or go down Texas, or go down Benton, turn on Texas, and then hop on there at Hamilton Road. It just seems like the folks coming down Shed Road, this is going to be of no benefit to them, because they're going to hit, they're going to either have to go out of their way to get back on their way, or they're going to have to go through a lot of traffic. And so, I think it's in our best interest to keep that crossing open, whatever direction we have to go to do that. I think it, I think it's going to keep traffic flowing, you know, regardless, so that's my opinion.
This whole project is about north-south traffic.
Correct.
The origins, twenty years ago, Mr. Darby was here, Mr. Williams was here, we made a commitment that we would continue the Arthur Ray Teague Parkway. It stopped at what is now Diamond Jack's. The voters had always, when they passed the original tax, wanted that Parkway to continue north. And that's what we're talking about, is moving people from north and south throughout the city without a railroad crossing. The, am I correct?
You're correct, sir.
It, we're bringing in things that we're trying to cloud the picture as to what we're trying to do, as far as traffic flow. We're bringing in this east-west corridor as if that's going to make a huge difference, and when in fact, this roadway is about north-south traffic flow, and continuing what the voters voted on. What year was it that was originally voted on, in the eighties? The tax for the Arthur Ray Teague Parkway, somewhere around there.
I think it was, I don't know.
And, you know, I think it's imperative that we continue forward, we have a contract in place, we have a contractor that's moving forward and expecting us to do what we're going to do. UP has clearly stated that they want that closed. And we, on this council, for my twenty years that I've been on here, negotiating with the railroad is non-existent. It, am I correct?
Ben.
I mean, you know, when they tell you something, that's the way it's going to be, and I mean, they, to Mr. Williams and Mr. Darby's point. be. And I mean, they, to Mr. Williams and Mr. Darby's point, I mean, those trains sit there on the track. They could care less if they sit there two or three hours, to be honest with you. So, we're in a position where we need to move forward. We have a contract in place. We have two to three years to work with all of the people and, and do the best for them that we can prior to that at-grade crossing at Shed Road being closed. So, it's my opinion that we should move forward, close the at-grade crossing, do whatever we can to assist those businesses and residents, that these are the alternates now upon that closing, and we have plenty of time to do it.
Mr. Jacob, you, you did not answer, Mr. Montgomery, Carson or his issue about the legality potential if we delay.
We have a contract in place with certain time delays, and the contractor expects, you know, to complete certain phases within certain time periods. If the contractor is delayed due to the lack of access, a denial by Union Pacific, then they can't finish on time. They have resources that may or may not be committed to other projects that are stuck here in Bossier. There would be, you know, increased time delays, you know, things of that nature. We can't get these men and these equipment to, you know, Project B or Project C, things of that nature. We could be liable for that. We could be liable for cost overruns, materials, things of that, operational costs, all, it's potentially, you know, anything. That, you know, i- if our delay in not securing the permit prevents a timely completion of the project by the contractor, and that failure, you know, that, that untimely completion costs them money, then we could potentially be liable for that, yes.
Okay.
And I, and I do want to stress the fact that, you know, i- if Union Pacific says, "We're not going to issue the permit unless you close this at-grade crossing," then, and the council wishes to keep that crossing open, the only option that we have would be extremely time-consuming and costly litigation in federal court, and sitting here today, the outcome would be extremely precarious, would be the best way that I could put it.
Yeah, but according to, to Mr. Rosenberg, we already got the permit in hand.
We have a permit to cross the railroad. We did not get a permit for the at-grade crossing, because we didn't believe a permit was needed at that location, because nothing's being improved there, other than the surface of the pavement. That makes sense.
I'm confused. What, what permit do we have?
We have the permit to go over their railroad.
So, like the overpass?
Sir?
Like, the overpass?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
So, that permit is hand, but even that permit requires a access agreement that has to be entered into by the contractor and the railroad, because they will be accessing that right-of-way to do work, and UP will not sign that agreement as the current project stands.
Okay. I think that's what you need to make clear, is that you may have a permit, but that doesn't mean the contractor can continue.
That's correct.
So, you, that needs to be clarified, that just because you have that permit, doesn't allow the contractor to continue. The railroad has to grant access to J.B. James.
Correct. You, so, and we, we do a lot of work in the railroad right-of-way here in Bossier City, a lot of railroads. This is common. So, we get a permit to put a utility underneath their railroad, or to do anything in and around, you know, within their right-of-way, we have to get a permit to do that. But once it goes into construction, the contract performing the work has to be involved in that process. They have to have the correct insurance. They have to engage with the, the UP. They have to pay UP's inspectors. Here, that would be rail pros to come in and do that work, and they were at the pre-construction conference. We always knew this was part of that effort. We've been trying to get those agreements taken care of for months, and could not understand what, what was happening, what's going on, what, what, why can't we get this? So, we, I don't know who, somebody poked UP in the eye. We got a meeting with them, and here we are today. They, what was communicated when we were with rail pros was, we can get to having those agreements in hands very quickly, within a day or two, if the city agrees to close the at-grade crossing at the end of construction, or we can pursue other methods of what, I don't know. But it, it just, there was no sense of, this is no big deal. Design it some other way, and do it this way, and you'll get across. That wasn't presented in, in that meeting. The, the intent was close the at-grade crossing. That was their intent, was to close the at-grade crossing.
So, they want to close it?
They want it closed.
So, it takes three years to build this Parkway? Then you don't think we could talk to them?
I'm certain we can get with them.
And try to keep it open?
We can, we can do a lot of things. All of those things are just going to take, take time.
Amanda, would you like to say something?
Now, I don't want to belabor the point, but I was at the meeting, and one of the biggest issues is the safety concern there. That has an extremely high accident rate at that particular crossing, and so, that was something, my understanding is that UP cannot close the crossing, that we have to do the closure, but that is definitely a concern. I know also with the traffic backing up, it is a concern with our first responders being able to navigate through that, and so, I think you've got a, a big public safety issue there that this closure would address as well.
How many, how many accidents have occurred in the last six months?
I don't know. In the last six months, they gave us statistics for about the last 25 years, and it was, it was close to 30, which they said-
In 25 years?
Doesn't sound like a lot, but they said they have some in the Dallas metro area that have one. So, statistically, for, for them, it is very high.
Okay. You thinking it has occurred in the last 12 months?
I don't have that information. I wouldn't want to speak on that.
It's been closed for probably the last four or five for other construction through there.
Last 24 months?
I don't know.
Okay.
Any idea how many trains that track, I mean, how many times they use that track in a, in a week? UP, in a week, I don't know. That UP had indicated that it's, I'm thinking of a different crossing, so I don't know to specifically. If they used it every day, one time a day, for 30 minutes, we're going to close it 24/7 for them to use it for an hour a day, basically. I mean, we, they just dictate to us what city streets we're going to close and leave open?
I'm telling you, they got the biggest union there is. We got to get our-
And they are, they did say they're running-
I keep saying, get your congressman, call him, and let's get on, but-
Their trains are two to three miles long, so they are-
If you look down, uh-
Extremely long.
Coming back down Benton Road out there, out of the parish, that's the same track right there, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, they're, they're, they're using three and four tracks out there, and they're sitting there waiting to get in. I mean, there's, there's got to be more than one or two a day.
They come, they come twice a day. I'm talking about that intersection.
Oh, well, there's-
Shed Road intersection, yeah. That's crazy.
I will just say that I catch enough trains at that track that I never use it, ever. If I need to go north, I somehow navigate to Benton Road and just use that. To me, it's useless, close a crossing. I know it affects a few people, but it's, it's an extreme inconvenience when we're building a first-class overpass over the railroad that'll be safe, quick, you'll never be stopped by a train.
And they were open to sharing concerns about it blocking multiple, you know, going on to Texas Street as well, so that was something they were willing to, to pass along, to look into.
I haven't used that in two years, and I go north-south all the time. It's horribly inconvenient to me. I'm not speaking for everybody.
Mr. Mayor, what's, what's your, what's your thought? What say you?
Well, thank you, sir. I was with Mr. Roche and Bach, and we did talk, we did go talk to all the owners, and we had a long, lengthy talk with all, each and every one of them, and they were, you know, they understood, and they all agreed that it, you know, they could live with what blockage right there. And as what Mr. Smith said earlier, that it would, you know, on, on Shed Road, it would kind of close that up. People had to go left or right. Well, that train is going to be there, because our family has a business right there by that, and it's closed anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour all the time. That's why I used to call President Williamson and tell him, and I would, I would be upset, because I would be hung up by it. If people are going west on Shed, they're going to be stopped right there at that light. They're going to have to go left or right if they're going to go, because that train's going to be there for a long time. If they're coming down that carriageway, and they want to go east on Shed, it's going to block up all the, all that, and go on to the Parkway. So, what good is the Parkway with it all blocked up right there, when it's not going to give easement to Benton Road? And, uh-
But that, but that rover, that train isn't there all day.
It's there at least three, three times a day, and it blocks the traffic at least three times a day.
Eight o'clock, 12 o'clock, and 5 o'clock, right?
Yes, sir, and that's why everybody's upset. It's always on the time they got to go to lunch and the time to come at home. But, and, and not only does it close Shed, it closes Texas and, and Barstow too, and that's kind of, I think it'd do like a shift change or something like that, and the guys are taking their time getting off the train and whatnot, too.
I've seen them get out of engine, get out of engine, and go in and eat in a restaurant, and, and I've called the railroad about that.
I, I am concerned about all the, the residents and the businesses. That's why I went with Mr. Roche and Bach, because I wanted to, them to know that I was concerned, and I said, "Look, this is probably going to happen. Is it going to affect your businesses?" And they, they, with the ones already on Shed Road with Bossier Remall and all that, they were kind of really not, I mean, they, their, their, their business is blocked up the whole time that train's there, because all, there's all these cars all in front of their business. They can't, they can't go leave or come back in. So, and, and it's just, and it'd be easier for McElroy, it's going to be hard for them to, and those, those real, real long trailers, to go around that circle with all that weight, you know, and to turn that corner, so that, uh-
That's a, that's a good reason to maybe reconsider a roundabout right there.
Yeah, but if you put a roundabout down at Benton Road, it's going to take up so much property, you know?
So, I take it that you're in favor of the closure of the-
I'm sorry to say, sir, but, I mean, I'm not sorry, sir. And I won't say I'm sorry to say, uh, I'm, you know, for the, I am for the, I believe it'd make a lot, you know, the traffic to flow a lot better on the carriageway, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so I see the chief's-
Yeah, let's, I've got some, I have a spare here.
Okay, if we say something.
Oh, go ahead, Brad.
I don't want to talk about whether you close it or not. I want to talk about time, times of the essence to us. I listened to it on the radio. We're diverted to the train, diverted due to train. Heard it three times yesterday. When they block right now, and we pick up somebody near your store, we have the only hospital in Bossier, Willis Night and Bossier. We got to go all the way to the interstate, come around, come back through all that traffic. To me, time, the quicker we can cross that railroad track, the better off everybody will be. That's all I want to say about the whole deal.
And you say you didn't come up and talk voluntarily, you just-
I'm irritated with these things.
I know, thank you.
It's, it's, no doubt, it's the same thing for us. Trains present a problem whenever it comes to somebody breaking in your house, whenever you need assistance, and the longer this project is delayed, the, the greater likelihood of somebody being adversely affected whenever it comes to the protection of life or property. And, and so, we're all frustrated by the trains. It, it impacts us on a day-in, day-out basis. Just as a safety matter, that intersection, you have McElroy Metal, who have deliveries several times a day, that typically would have 18-wheelers crossing those tracks. You've got slow-moving 18-wheelers, you've got fast-moving trains, and it's a potential, great potential, for a serious accident at that intersection if it continues to be allowed to remain open the way that it is. I mean, it's inevitable. We're going to have crashes. I don't have the data of how many crashes we have there, but anytime you have 18-wheelers and, and trains, there's the potential for serious bodily injury or death.
And the only other, one other thing to add, and this was, you know, if you look at it, Councilman Darby, you, it's about half a mile between that intersection at Shed Road north to the new intersection of Walter O'Bigby Carriageway, you know, that north-south route. So, it's, it's not like you're going way out of your way north to turn around and come back. It's, it's a half a mile up the road. It's a, it's a, it's a quick jaunt up there that you'll be glad to take when that railroad's crossing Shed Road.
I just want to reiterate, you're correct. When it blocks Shed Road, East Texas, and Barstow, that's what we normally see when it gets to that point, and we have no other access. But I want to make the point that you made. It's been closed for five months now, and we've been dealing with it. It's not like, how long has it been? At least five months.
At least five months.
So, we've been, altered our response and everything to that, which he has districts that alter that. I have districts that alter that, so, but just to be aware, we've been dealing with that already. But even with that, when it blocks all three, that's a whole different ballgame. We got to go either to Hamilton to traffic, come around to Benton, come back up to Willis Night and Bossier. That's a pretty long transport. I'd have to get you the mileage off of it, but it wouldn't take me long, because I heard yesterday diverted by a train. All I got to pull is trauma six and see where they went and get the mileage off of it.
And sort of-
But the Parkway would resolve that.
Anyway, we-
The carriageway.
Yes. We can get from that side of the tracks to the other side of the tracks. That's all I'm interested in. That, that makes life grand for us.
Guys, I think we about beat this horse to death.
No, we riding the train.
Beat this train to death, dude.
On the track.
Catch a ride, huh?
On the track, yeah.
Appreciate all the comments, though, and a good discussion.
The motion on the table is to continue the item for 30 days, which would be December the 7th. So, if Mr. Darby doesn't want to withdraw that, that's what the motion is on the table.
Does anybody understand?
I'm going to ride this train.
You got to hop it, though, when they stop.
I'm not going to get off.
I have a motion by Mr. Darby and a second by Mr. Smith.
Yes, ma'am. All right, so we're going, cast your vote when it comes up, huh?
It should be up.
Voting against it, if you don't want to continue.
Let's see, what am I doing?
Motion carries to continue it for 30 days.
Could we see, I'm really-
If we're continuing-
We've already voted, we're done now. Ben, we'd just like to see if you can, we can do it, expedite it, if that's possible, and I know you know that.
Mr. Darby and Mr. Smith, are you guys amenable to if it, if y'all can work it out within the 30 days to bring it back before?
Yeah, it's, it's not a, you know, it doesn't have to be 30 days, but just as long as we get some dialogue before 30 days.
Yes, sir.
I would certainly, in light of this, recommend to Mr. Jacobs that he reaches out to J.B. James. Mr. Roche and Bach would be part of that two-man team to let them know what we're doing, so that we can mitigate any type of potential loss, or what they see as a potential loss in their construction contract. It'd be very wise to get ahead of that, rather than deal with this down the road, and they bring it up unbeknownst to us, and, because Mr. Jacobs corrected me, we could end up, you know, in mitigation or arbitration wherever, or court. So, I think it's imperative that we be open and communicate with the contractor as to our intentions and, and what we're doing, and, and how we can work with them to make sure that this doesn't delay their performance under the contract that we voted on. And if y'all would not, if you would please report back, I'd appreciate that.
All right, Phyllis.
The council's aware of what's going on.
Adopt a resolution to adopt the five-year capital projects plan, first and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police communications officer for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution- Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a tax audit clerk due to a resignation in the sales tax department. First and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of an animal control officer one due to resignation and backfilling any position this may create for Public Works Animal Control Division. First and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Wait, can I talk to you about this? Will we get done? No, not now. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a superintendent of Public Works to, for, due to a resignation, funds to be transferred from herbicide and mosquito to animal control with no net change to the budget. First and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a part-time kennel worker to be paid from budgeted salaries and benefits. First and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a tax administrator due to a resignation in the sales tax department. First and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
There we go. Adopt an ordinance declaring that an emergency exists in the city of Bossier City which affects property, public health, and safety due to a deteriorated cross drain at Ella and Co., first and final reading.
Some move.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Mr. Maggio, are you a yay or a nay?
Yay. He came up.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance adding civic center supervision to the job duty of the executive assistant, Carol King Anderson, and increasing the salary by $18,000 for the increased job responsibilities. First reading.
Some move.
I do want to thank Carol. I know she's been working over there last week, this weekend. Got something big tonight, so I commend you and I appreciate it. I'm sure the council does, too. And I know, I saw calling the man on the corner in the other, Mr. Chandler.
I know, Ms. Carol is, I mean, she is going to be a plus to that. She's already got it shining, smelling better, cleaner. But what it is, is the three guys over there, they just left all unannounced, and it's kind, well, it's kind of announced. But Ms. Carol was good enough to get up, stand up, and take it over, and it's, and it's going to become a very, a better place, I believe.
Yeah, maybe we can start getting some people in there, though. I appreciate it, Ms. Carol. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote. I do want to say, I appreciate the healthy discussion, you know, you know, we got to, you know... Make a decision, and it was made, so we live with it and we move on.
Yeah, he...